Okay, thank you very much. We're now on to item number 25. Having considered item number 24 at the beginning of the meeting, we are now in first impression ordinances and as well as action items. Item 25 is consider increasing by full-time equivalent or FTE community relations coordinator, also commonly known as the block leader program coordinator, by point two five to make a full-time position, a one-point on a full-time position. And so, Mr. City Manager, would you like to introduce the presenter for item 25? And welcome.
Yes, we have a thank you. We have two staff available to present and answer questions, Katie Nomura and Tom Chin, who are here. Katie is in my office and Tom was previously introduced by the mayor as the emergency operations manager. So Katie, I believe you'll introduce the item and then turn it to Tom.
Great, yes. So we work here today to discuss the potential addition of a point two-five percent of a position to increase the existing point seventy-five percent position to full-time. Tom will be giving this presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Tom Chin. I'm the manager for the city of Cupertino. As indicated tonight, we will be considering the increase of this position. The recommended action is to approve the increase and approve increasing the current point seven-five FTE community relations coordinator position by point two-five and approve budget modification number 2122-153 to appropriate thirty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars for the point-two-five FTE addition. For background, the city's award-winning block leader program was introduced after September 11, 2001, to connect neighbors and build community, resulting in safer, healthier, and happier neighborhoods. Block leaders connect with our neighbors, share resources from the city, and build community engagement, including increasing public safety and communication. A block leader program also facilitates information sharing between the highly engaged members of the community and city staff. The community relations coordinator that administers the block leader program was originally established as a point-seven-five FTE with benefits in 1998. This is not a recommended practice since benefited positions are generally required to be full-time in order to maximize cost efficiency for the city. This is the only position in the city's structure under point-seven-five benefited status, and it is recommended that the position be increased to a full-time position in order to be in alignment with current city practices. Approving the 1.0 FTE will ensure that the program is fully staffed. It allows for a full-time position recruitment and will bring the position in consistent status with other positions. Additionally, the neighborhood watch program has been realigned to be administered by this position, reducing the need for an additional part-time position. This will increase the efficiency as many of the participants overlap in both the block leader program and neighborhood watch. The programs will only require that 1.0 FTE instead of the 1.25 FTEs prior. Finally, the additional full-time position will support the revamp and administration of block leader and neighborhood watch programs. Then, as a reminder, the recommended action tonight is to approve increase in the current point-seven-five FTE community relations coordinator, commonly known as a block leader coordinator position by point-two-five and approve budget modification number 2122-153 to appropriate thirty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars for the point-two-five FTE addition. With that, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and council members, for considering. Now I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Councilmember Moore.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Tom, for the report. So I brought this up on some of the previous items that I would appreciate having the budget unit number tied to these changes to the budget so that I can quickly allocate them in our budget booklet. And then I would like, when the truing up of the numbers happens, we currently have employee compensation and benefits at fifty-five, about fifty-six thousand plus thirty-four thousand, and now we're moving to a hundred and fifty-three thousand. So I'm assuming that the total, when you say total cost for the full-time employee would be one-fifty-three thousand four hundred and seven dollars, that that is total compensation plus benefits. And then, yeah, so I'll just start with that. So is that, do I have that correct? And then, when we go back into the budget, I want to make sure that these numbers are matching what we just discussed.
Yes, councilmember Moore, that is correct. One-hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred and seven is inclusive of salary and benefits.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, councilmember Moore. Thank you, Tom. All right, I don't see any other hands raised from our council for clarifying questions. So to, actually, we do. Vice Mayor Chow.
Sorry. So, one-fifty-three thousand includes benefits. So what's the total on just salary without benefit and compensation?
I'll have to, Vice Mayor Chow, I'll have to look up that in just one second, if you allow me to. Vice Mayor Chow, the total salary range, the top-end range is at a hundred and nine thousand twenty-six dollars and thirty-two cents annually.
Okay. And so, so the description, I don't see a full description of all the responsibilities. Is that going to be only block leader program and neighborhood watch? Because if we have a full-time position like this, I would imagine these two programs wouldn't take a full-time position. But we do need a community relations manager for be the point person to connect with the many community organizations. And every time we have a project, Blackberry Farm, Westport, any project that needs outreach, I think we like the vocal specific plan did a lot of outreach. So all of those connections made should have been collected, kept in the database, managed by a community relations manager. The next time another project needs to outreach, this person has all the data or even the business community outreach. But I think that's economic manager. But then, but it seems right now, every time we're starting from scratch, it feels like. And we don't even know how many nonprofits we have. What are all their contacts? And I mean, and the one over the work program item we have is a neighborhood, a potential neighborhood council that, so would this person also be managing that program?
And Tom, I can take that question. So Vice Mayor Chow, this position would be in charge of the neighborhood watch program, the block leader program, and that also includes the council work program or the city work program item to revamp the block leader program and all of what that, all of what that entails. As far as outreach into the community, the block leader program is a key avenue in which the city can outreach to our residents and connecting with those neighborhoods. And so that will continue to be a key component of this. In addition, this position is going to be coordinated heavily with our citizen corps and CARES programs, as the mayor alluded to earlier, as we want to have a more cohesive neighborhood volunteer program in entirety. And as far as the other ideas and suggestions you had regarding nonprofits, other community relations, we would have conversations with our city manager to determine whether those functions would fall under this position as well. That has not been previously discussed.
Okay. But as you know, our block leader program only reach twenty percent of our residents. So if we only rely on block leader, we cannot ever rely on block leader program to reach out to our residents. Some residents have different interests. Some like to be involved in block leader. Some might be involved in culture and art. Some may be involved in different kinds of nonprofit. So reach out, to reach out to our residents, you do need to reach out to all kinds of interests residents might have. And so if you want to create a full-time position for community relations, it cannot be just for a block leader program. And I would not think that that deserves a full-time position or even joining neighborhood watch.
And to clarify, it's the job classification. The actual position is the block leader program coordinator. But the classification that is we use in HR is the community relations coordinator. But I can understand your point. And but to the effect of how much time we'd like to invest into the block leader program and the neighborhood watch to revamp them, as has been discussed in the work program, we believe that this is, will were a full-time position. And we will be expanding the block leader program to make sure there are opportunities for others to be getting involved and to make sure that we, our goal is to reach definitely more than twenty percent of our residents.
No, my point is, even if you expand block leader program, not all residents are interested in this kind of program.
I understand.
And they are only going to reach out to the portion of residents who are interested in block leader neighborhood watch. But community relations manager should be doing community relations.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just trying to clarify that. I get, I understand that the name, the classification name maybe confusing in terms of what the position does.
No, I think I'm concerned about the job description. If we are going to approve this, we will go out to seek for candidates. Then the description, roles, and responsibilities, we need to clarify today because then that is what we are approving today. If we are just approving block leader because they meet what, once a month? And you want a full-time person to manage a program that meet once a month? I cannot approve that.
Well, sorry, Greg, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. So we have an existing three-quarter time position that was previously served well by the prior incumbent who worked with the council and community in the block leader and neighborhood watch program. Administratively, prior to my arrival, that program was moved over to report to our emergency management system because of the natural dovetailing of neighborhood watch and block leader with emergency preparedness and those issues. And now because of the recent resignation of the prior successful incumbent, who is an anomaly in our staffing, we're recommending it go up to full-time, not to change the prior seventy-five percent duties of the position, but so that we can enhance and augment the neighborhood watch and block leader program as it links up to emergency management services. That is not to say there aren't other needs in terms of community outreach and engagement. It's just, that's not been the responsibility of this position in its past and not the focus for this position. There are other needs for that in the city that we could certainly look at in the existing budget or prospective changes to better address through the vice mayor's request.
Okay. We have hands raised from councilmember Willie as well as councilmember Moore. So councilmember Willie.
Yeah, so actually, Greg, thank you for speaking up. You know, because that's kind of where my question starts is, hearing the vision of the city manager for the deployment of the 200-plus city employment employees as opposed to from the bottom up, and that's how I would characterize it, which others might disagree, but from the bottom up saying, we have a block leader program, a neighborhood watch program, and we want to increase the employee hours to wait to full-time. When I see it from what I consider to be the bottom up, if, if that was what's on the table prior to the city manager speaking up, I come at it from a high-tech, typical high-tech thinking, and that is, we work off of metrics. And if, if we have currently twenty percent of the city with block leader programs, I'm in Rancho. Be honest with you, I've never heard of a block leader program, at least in my vicinity of Rancho. So a metric would be, okay, the block leader position is now going to be expanded to three-quarter, and the metric would be that we have twenty percent or how many streets are covered? And we want to see that increase by X number of streets per year. And that's not to say the person has to meet those targets, but at least they have an understanding of what, what they're intended to do as opposed to managing the existing block leader base. And so when, when somebody comes to me and says, gee whiz, I need another, another head at work, I have a metric, what that expectation is going to do for the, for the company. Okay. So that's where my thinking is, hearing the vision from the city manager. Now I'll kind of go just a little bit more in there. In the one-on-one last week with the city manager, I expressed my interest of really having a city person that really is good at community outreach. I mean, we have 5G cells and we have residents that feel they're not being heard by the city. We have residents that are concerned about code enforcement that feel they're not being heard by the city. And so if, if we're going to increase, you know, the number of hours for that type of position, I would leave it up to the city manager to deploy or to allocate and request more head with his vision being the driving factor. And his vision being, you know what? Our block leader program could also dovetail with this, and let's make it a full-time rather than three-quarter time. And so I'm not sure the city manager is ready tonight to, to give us his vision and what he feels is truly needed in those regards. And in that respect, I would think that give the new city manager a couple months to decide his take on city staff and how to shuffle, reallocate. Maybe he has some excess hours that might cover that. That's not, you know, so I'll leave it at that. That my preference would be to let the city manager be the driver behind the request and the city manager present us with his vision for us to approve. So, but thank you for speaking up, Greg. greatly appreciate it.
Thanks, councilmember Willie. Councilmember Moore.
I just have a pretty quick and probably simple cleanup request. So the community outreach and neighborhood watch item is budget unit 100-12-632. However, under Office of Emergency Management, we also have mentioned the block leader program in there. And if there could be some, some cleanup of that, I have a little bit of concern about the, the sentence in the staff report stating the community relations coordinator position that administers the block leader program was originally established as a zero-point-seven-five full-time employee, the FTE with benefits in 1998. This is not recommended practice since benefited positions are generally required to be full-time in order to maximize cost efficiency to the city. So I just flipped through the budget to find some of these other staffing items which have fractional amounts. So I, I would be careful in using this argument. Maybe, maybe that's unnecessary, but I'd be careful because there are some other fractional amounts within the budget, and, and they're probably being handled by one person who's doing three different jobs, and then they add up to, to the one, but you can't quite tell when you're looking at it. Right. And so I totally understand this, this increase. And then I would like to see with regards to the Office of Emergency Management, if you'd look over the service objectives and, and if it needs cleanup, I think possibly that the, the block leader part needs to get pulled out of, out of the, that, that heading. All right, thank you.
Thanks, councilmember Moore. Director Al, Laura, I see that you turned your camera. Did you want to speak to that? You don't have your hand raised, but I wanted to give you that opportunity if you're so inclined.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood councilman or more correctly. It's Christine Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services. When the report refers to the point-seven-five, that is the total position. So there is no additional point-two-five somewhere else where elsewhere in the budget where you see a portion of a person, the remaining portion to get them to one is living in other budget units. So it really is a position that's just budgeted at point-seven-five of 20, 80 hours, but receives benefits like vacation, sick leave, CalPERS, those types of items.
Right, right. I was, I was guessing that, but thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, sure, confirmation. Councilmember Way, I think, I think you've had a first turn. So, you know, let me go ahead and ask a couple questions. So can, can, can someone speak to the citizen corps? Because, you know, that, that's something that was not mentioned in the staff report. But when I went to this kind of revamped block leader meeting last week, the citizen corps was present. And of course, the citizen corps is comprised of our emergency volunteers. I thought it lent a great dynamic to the meeting, and there was certainly kind of a, an in-person vision of it. I will say before, you know, as a preface to answer this question, that I was similarly skeptical when I saw this, when I had heard of this item, to a couple of, you know, prior council members' comments. I wasn't sure why another quarter FTE would be needed. It is a bit compelling to think that the neighborhood watch program could use some improvement or reviving since it is certainly an ongoing issue. And, you know, keeping your eyes on the streets and your, you know, ears to the ground, so to speak, is probably the best way to make sure that you have neighborhood safety. But I was, I was really impressed by this meeting. You know, I thought it was really well-run. I thought just having all of the people that are involved in these various sectors kind of facilitated in a, in a common manner, made a lot of sense. So could, could anyone speak to the citizen corps and how its role will be, you know, kind of affected by this program? I'm going to close the door, so I apologize for, you know, slipping off camera. But if someone could speak to that, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for attending last week as we begin to relaunch our neighborhood and volunteer programs as we emerge from the COVID pandemic. You're absolutely right. Our citizen corps program encompasses our citizen, our community emergency response team, medical reserve corps, and our Cupertino amateur radio and emergency services programs. It's currently administered by our Ken Erickson, longtime member of the community and longtime employee here with the city. We envision the combined block leader, neighborhood watch, and citizen corps programs as a comprehensive volunteer management program to allow for citizens, members of our community, as I mentioned, key and highly engaged members of our community to self-determine their level of engagement within the emergency management program. Block leaders have the opportunity to connect and share information with the, with the community. Of course, having the opportunity to book and work with the city on block parties and things like that to build the cohesion that is necessary for a more engaged neighborhood. Neighborhood watch focusing on safety and monitoring of our, of our communities, engaging with the sheriff's office and determining what the next, next best safety protocols can be. And again, the citizen corps, the fully engaged, highly trained members of our community that can help respond and engage with our public safety entities. We believe that these programs are, allow for, again, that, that self-determination of how involved someone wants to be and how much level of training they'd like to see. If they'd like to share, just receive information and help share it with their neighbors, exponentially expanding our reach beyond the registered block leader program, those that they can outreach to, send, whether they send emails or knock on their doors, they exponentially change our reach to the community from a trusted source within the community. And finally, as you mentioned, then combining the neighborhood watch with the block leader program. This actually represents a reduction in staffing. We had a, a point-seven-five budgeted, benefited full-time FTE for block leader program and a part-time coordinator for neighborhood watch. We are combining these positions into one FTE, actually reducing the overall load of workforce.
And Tom, can you just speak to, you know, the efficacy points of both the block leader program and the neighborhood watch program? What are some of the ideas when we're going out on recruitment for this 1.0 FTE to try to enhance both? I mean, I see with the combination under, you know, the volunteer corps for emergency services, that it does tend to amplify the message. But, you know, if we approve this and you're looking to go out to recruit or the city's looking to go out to recruit, what would we be looking for to, you know, help give us the assurance on council and the public that both the block leader program and the neighborhood watch program would be enhanced by putting this under one FTE and one person?
Yeah. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. And absolutely, they're actually speaking the baseline of emergency management, where we set goals and objectives when we're responding to emergencies. We'll also be setting goals and objectives for our improvement process and inclusive of the, the city work program for revamping block leader and neighborhood watch. We will set specific objectives. At this point, we'll partner with our longtime block leaders to determine what a threshold could be to meet that goal and then continually evaluate that. If we're approaching the, the goal early, we'll, we'll move the, we'll move the goalposts so we can better accommodate our success at that point. And so we set a new objective in the midterm and evaluate where we're at at that point again. We'll also be utilizing one of the, an additional city work program item for personal preparedness, engaging members of the community who attend the training and sign up for one of these, one of our volunteer programs, including block leader and neighborhood watch, and then provide a emergency preparedness kit, an all-hazards emergency preparedness kit for, to each member that attends and signs up, essentially takes action on their training.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. You know, my last question to staff from this go-around is directed towards our interim city manager, Greg. So Greg, when, when you first came on, you know, we had a conversation, and we've had a few, right, started, where your perspective of a city was basically that, you know, there are a few things that a city does that it has to do. One of them is emergency services. You know, in a crisis, you know, and it's not a verbatim quote, but I thought it was very compelling. The point you're making, in a crisis, you're not looking at FEMA. You're looking at the people right there in the locality. I mean, do you see this as something that would enhance that idea? Right? Because I, I mean, I could look at various departments in the city and go, you know, look, IT hit it out of the park, right? I mean, in terms of getting us prepared for earthquake preparedness, and it just kind of transitioned to a pandemic where probably literally on day two, we were able to go remote. I mean, do you see this as enhancing our capabilities prospectively in that regard? And if not, you know, you know, please feel free to be absolutely candid about it and let us know if you think it would benefit from time or further contemplation to bring it back to us later.
Mr. Mayor, three comments. First, your recollection is spot-on. I did share with the council, I believe it was in a prior discussion, that I viewed one of the three most important roles of the city manager's, emergency preparedness and emergency response. So your, your recollection there is exact. The other point I wanted to share was just when I was the city manager of another West Valley city, and I was over in Los Gatos for eight years. And I need to be blunt, we were always envious of Cupertino's extraordinary emergency preparedness emergency preparedness and CERT programs, um, that you had been able to structure under prior council and staff leadership, working with the fire department and sheriff and others, that left, uh, a lot of the other West Valley cities wishing we had the same. Um, and so I do see this move, both the administrative move that was decided before I joined the city of moving Neighborhood Watch and the Block Leader Program into your emergency services program as living up to that past vision of, and of excellence for the city and emergency preparedness. Um, and so I was comfortable with that as playing to a strength of the city that this last year and a half has taught us more than ever, needs to remain a strength. And if the program only has had 20% participants at some point in the past, the revamping that Katie spoke about, you know, let's set an aggressive target to improve and increase staff. Um, and that's, uh, fulfilling the history of Cupertino that we've learned.
Great. Thank you, Greg. Let's go on to, uh, Councilmember Wei and Vice Mayor Chow with some follow-up, uh, questions at this point, before we go to our member of the public with the hand raised.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Paul. Actually, um, I, I didn't have a chance to talk about this. I just want to say, my mother's block has a Neighborhood Watch, oh, no, has a Block Leader, and it's just really wonderful. People knock on her doors and, you know, she's 89, she's not, doesn't speak English. They will give her, you know, uh, tips and they'll give her phone numbers. And they have, uh, Fourth of July, um, block celebrations. So it's a valuable program. And, um, we, um, really, I'm very happy this is going to be extended to a full-time job so that we can expand the program.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Vice Mayor Chow.
So I hope to get some numbers on, so how many people we have in the Citizens Corps? And my understanding for Block Leader Program is about 20%. I'm not sure if it's correct of the city, uh, household that's maybe in a Block Leader Program area. However, only 10% of all the block leaders are active, which means only 2% of the city house, household is lucky enough to have an active Block Leader Program who does go around. Is that an accurate understanding? Because I, I actually had kept being asking about this since 2019 when it first got on. I never got an update, uh, formally. And so in my perspective, this is default program because, um, every year I as city manager, nothing seems to come out of it. And it's stagnant. Um, so, or, or maybe my understanding is incorrect. Then please help me understand. And then when we are saying, oh, we want the Citizens Corps to exponentially increase outreach, what do we mean by that? Each of them is an individual, they volunteer with the city. They don't automatically have an email list of people to outreach to. They may at most outreach to their own friends. So what do we mean by outreach? So when I say, when you really want to talk about outreach, people have different interests. Some people are in those Rotary Club, and they may not be Neighborhood Watch or Block Leader Program. Some people are in a line dancing club association, they have a huge membership. So when you want to reach out to really have outreach, you need to outreach to different organizations, serve these citizens with different interests. But if we are limiting ourselves to only Block Leader Program, Block Leader Program in the past, past seems to have only been people come to a city hall, a meeting hosted by the city, city feed them information. They may or may not disseminate it to their block. And there is no accountability on what they exactly do. Some of them may have Block Leader Party, most of them don't. So I, maybe my understanding is incorrect. Please correct me then.
Okay. Thanks, Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you.
I'll move.
Vice, yeah, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor Chow. I appreciate these questions. And I'll get, I will commit to getting you the specific, uh, data analysis on how many, how wide our reach and our percentage of the population, percentage of blocks. Uh, I will commit to getting, getting you that information as soon as possible. Um, when I speak to having our Citizen Corps and our Block Leader Programs, uh, exponentially expanding our reach, we started working on this in particular during last year's fire and heat events. In particular, the light, dry lightning storms, as we all remember, that ignited the CCU complex and the SCU complex in October of last year. During the secondary lightning storm, we asked that, and the heat events, we asked all of our Citizen Corps and our Block Leader Programs to reach out to their networks and, uh, share the official city's information on how to be most prepared for the event. And we asked them to, to actually show accountability, to your exact point. We asked them to report back to me and our Citizen Corps Coordinator, uh, how many people they actually made contact with, whether it was a door-to-door, uh, opportunity, knocking on their neighbors' doors, or it was phone calls and emails to individuals. And we were able to reach over 15,000 people in two days, reported by the block leaders and their, and our Citizen Corps Programs. So in just two days, we were able to do that, um, utilizing, uh, that, that timeframe. I intend to continue that, that work, having report backs on how we engage with our communities. I'd like to hear how block parties, um, whether officially, uh, applied for and approved by the city, or neighborhood events where they invite their neighbors over to their homes, such as we're enacting with our National Night Out Event on August 3rd. We aren't closing down streets just yet for official block parties, but we are asking and inviting our neighbors to our block leaders and Neighborhood Watch members to engage and invite members of the community. We, in 24 hours, we had over 37 members of our community commit to a block party on October, on August 3rd, and our, excuse me, a National Night Out Event on August 3rd, with over, uh, 500 households to be outreach in just 24 hours. So, uh, we're, we're expecting a, um, better recognition and metric system in our engagement of the Block Leader Program.
To have numbers. So how many, uh, Citizen Corps members do we have?
We have over 900 registered Citizen Corps members.
Wow. And, uh, how many block leaders do we have?
You know, as I inherited the program, I'm still looking at all the data and I wish I would give you a, an exact number, but I will commit to that as soon as possible after this.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a block leader. I get the newsletter, so I, I read it. We, we have 360 block leaders. Well, you know, let, let me just say, you know, the Block Leader Program as it exists right now, yes, it ebbs and flows, but I think, I'm, I'm convinced that, you know, getting some administration in there and kind of mixing it up with regard to, you know, thoughtfully, you know, thinking about what we can do to combine other programs, um, getting, you know, a new coordinator in there, uh, with some perspectives and ideas on how to kind of kickstart people. I mean, I'm a block leader, but I'm, you know, kind of abashed to say that there are years that go by that I don't have an effect. You know, but like Tom is, you know, describing, at least we have that mechanism when it is critically important to reach out, right? I mean, I'd gone through the exercise of knocking on all the doors and trying to get, you know, people's contact information at some point. And so I, I mean, I know that the mechanism is there. Um, I, I feel comfortable with, you know, supporting requests, you know, given our current, you know, staffing and thinking on this. So, uh, I, I mean, maybe i- individual, you know, perspectives vary. But I'm, I, I think we, we need to look at the purpose of this. It's, it's not so much to kind of, you know, kind of, like, top particular, you know, positions. It, it, it's really just to kind of get people interconnected and provide them that mechanism. I mean, there are, um, a lot of busy people in our city, but just to have them as part of the program gives them that opportunity. You know, and if it's kickstarted, I, I think it, um, could, you know, very well, uh, make it a lot more effective. To say that, I, I don't know where you get the 10%, you know, idea. There are a lot of people in the program. And if at a particular event, there were 36 people showing up, and then that's the basis of like only 10% participating, I think that's a little bit erroneous. I mean, I, I could well be in the 90% that you're referring to that are inactive, but I don't really consider myself, you know, truly inactive from the program. So, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised, um, and I'll, um...
Oh, I, I, I'm, I guess I'm out of order. I'm, let's, I'll wait until we've gotten, uh, comments from the public and, uh, because I have some, uh, additional requests of information, so.
Okay, great. So, uh, let's go to our member of the public with a hand raised, that is Peggy Griffin. And again, I'll remind the members of the public, um, that would like to speak, that you'll need to raise your hand before our first comment is completed. And so, welcome, Peggy.
Good evening again, councilmembers and staff. I welcome the thought that the Block Leader Program will be revamped. I live in a la- uh, neighborhood with, uh, we have had a block leader for over 10 years who has done nothing ever, not, has not disseminated any information, has not done anything. And when we tried to have another block leader, we were told we already had one. So, uh, we were given no choice other than to work with this person, which was not an option. So I look forward to something like term limits, um, requirements that they have to do and proof that they did it. Maybe cycle through several different people. Don't stick us with the same person, please. Also, working, combining the Block Leader and the Neighborhood Watch Program makes a lot of sense. And under emergency, uh, care makes a lot of sense because in an emergency, you can leverage the block leaders. But I also agree with councilmembers, uh, Chow and Willie that you can't just rely on the block leaders. I mean, when I read the title, Community Relations Coordinator, I read a lot more into it than the Block Leader and Watch Program. I read someone I could go to if I was having issues with the city to communicate with the city on different problems. And so I think there's an aspect that is missing that this title implies, but the job description isn't there for it. So I behoove you to either make a different position, but under the same coordinated effort, or add it to the job description. We need more outreach than just the block leaders and the Neighborhood Watch. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And there are no other hands raised at this point, and so I'll bring it back to council. And ask with the pleasure of councils with regard to, uh, putting forward a motion for our further discussion. The default recommended action is approving, increasing the point seven, five FTE to a full, uh, 1.0 FTE and a budget modification of an additional $38,352 for the point two, five FTE addition. Uh, Councilmember Wei, you have your hand raised. Did you want to bring forward the default or a different motion?
So moved for the default motion, please.
Councilmember Willie, would you like to second?
Um, no, I was going to suggest a, uh, different, uh, motion, so.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and second for the sake of discussion, um, the recommended action. And so I have hands raised from Councilmember Willie and Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Willie, did you want to, uh, at this point, um, suggest a substitute motion or comments on the current motion?
Well, why don't I go ahead and suggest a substitute motion? And that is that with, with all the questions that, uh, we've had tonight, you know, the true job description, um, even the resident suggestion is suggesting that, you know, it, there needs to be more clarification and stuff. So the substitute motion would be to have the, uh, city manager bring this back after he's had a chance to evaluate his staff and evaluate this position and see what kind of, uh, uh, connection there can be between these different groups and, and a slightly bigger job description that is really focused on, uh, community engagement. That's where I think, you know, our community needs, needs more interaction. So that would be my substitute motion. Have the city manager bring this back when they have the, the questions from tonight answered and a vision for this real position going forward.
Okay. Is there a second for Councilmember Willie's substitute motion? I see Vice Mayor Chow, you have the hand raised. Did you want to?
I second that. I, but I'm not sure what exactly is the motion. I mean, the motion is to not approve the staff recommendation, but ask them to come back. But, but I was going to suggest a substitute motion that would expand the responsibility of community relations manager to ac- actually be community relations manager, not limited to Block Leader Program or Neighborhood Watch. Those are just part of the community relations manager. And this person would manage your relation with all the community organizations that we have in Cupertino, um, Rotary Lions Club, different, uh, community clubs and, 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 and then, then, um, any, any type of project. City needs outreach, community outreach. This person should, um, be the person who could provide information to all the staff.
Okay, um, you know, Vice Mayor Chow, I don't, I don't hear a second from what you're describing. So let me, uh, before I go to our city manager and...
So I guess my, I'm proposing a different, um...
I understand that. Let me, let me go to the...
Could I see if I have second for my motion?
Well, no, because I have to check to see if anyone wants to second the original substitute motion.
Okay.
The button line on that. Okay, so, uh, Councilmember Moore, did you want a second? Councilmember Willie's? Okay, so you have a head shake there. I don't see a, a subs- so, um, City Manager Larson, did you want to speak to, uh, either the substitute motion on the table or the comment made by Vice Mayor Chow?
Um, I, just parliamentary, you may want to address the two substitute motions first to see if there's a, there's not a second to the first. I don't know if there's a second to the second, um, and then I can provide a comment.
Okay, very good. So we'll go back, um, to the parliamentary procedure aspect of this. And so, um, I see hands raised from Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Willie, and Councilmember Moore. I don't have a second for Councilmember Willie's substitute motion. Is there a second for, uh, Vice Mayor Chow's substitute motion? And I see Councilmember Willie with a hand raised. Councilmember Willie?
Yes.
Okay. And so, um, my understanding of Vice Mayor Chow's motion, substitute motion, is that it is asking for staff to come back to us at a later date with a, uh, fuller description of this position of the Community Relations Coordinator. Uh, is that the gist of the motion without, you know, all the extra kind of, you know?
I don't think the staff needs to come back with that. The, there is not really a very detailed description anyway in the staff report. So I think, um, just expand, just write out the roles and responsibility I think Greg will write out, which would go beyond what's already in the staff report. Staff report only has really a simple description. So I think staff can take the amendment motion and then include that as a job, job description. I don't think they need to come back for another approval. Right, Craig?
I, I think there is a broader discussion the council needs to have on the community service, community relations discussion. And I would appreciate the opportunity to work on that with the staff team and bring it back to you. However, I do think that's somewhat separate from the issue before you tonight. First, unless you're planning to reduce the Neighborhood Watch and the Neighborhood Block Leader Program, all we're really talking about is a 25% addition position. And to have an expanded community outreach program with a quarter of a position isn't going to get very much, and I just don't want to set up a false expectation. If what the direction from the council is, is to recast the Neighborhood Watch Program and the Block Leader Program... into a much expanded community outreach program, I don't think that belongs necessarily in emergency management. I think it belongs in a different location and it would probably lead to a diminution of the neighborhood watch and block leader program. So I do view them as somewhat separate issues that are linked. I clearly hear the council direction of let's the council wants to talk about the bigger issue of community engagement and outreach and customer service. I think I've heard that from all of them during the course of tonight's discussion. I don't know if you're saying do that at the expense of neighborhood watch and block leader.
Uh, I understand. So you mean this position would be under the emergency management? So it will not be community relations manager. It will just be emergency community relation manager. Let's clarify that. That's don't call it community relations manager. I think that will be very confusing to people. So that's one thing. The second thing is I could you clarify what exactly this would take a full time position to do to manage about two hundred commu- block leader program and neighborhood watch? Who really only have like a meeting of months, a monthly meeting maybe? Why is there a need for a full time position to just do block leader and neighborhood watch? I couldn't understand that.
And the issue before the council was not the original seventy five percent position that was in the approved budget for this year, as well as the last seven approved budgets or however long the incumbent was in that role, reporting to community relations. That has been an existing, I forget the prior incumbent's name, Katie. Can you share that?
Laura Lee.
Okay, so it's Laura Lee's prior position that has been in the budget for a while. Without any council action whatsoever tonight, that position continues at a seventy five percent level per the prior manager authority, which I thought made sense. That was moved from community communications over to emergency management because of the block leader cert, neighborhood watch linkage that proved itself beneficial with the fire before as Tom laid out. And so that's kind of the continuation. Your staff thought there is a chance to enhance the program in two ways, to do an additional quarter position that could allow for the revamping of the program to make it even better. So if indeed it's only two hundred people, of which only ten percent, I I have no idea if these numbers are at all accurate. Tom has promised to get those numbers back to council on what they actually are, which will then show you what the work is. It will also set the baseline for what we hope this revamp will do to upgrade and change it with an additional quarter time position. That all seems to me to be a very different issue from getting a master listing of all the nonprofits, all the surface clubs, the school clubs, creating a mobilization tool for community engagement and outreach on issues from code enforcement to land use issues to climate change, to the whole conundrum of what's in the city. That bigger issue is important.
You you brought you brought up an important issue that actually was probably a decision that shouldn't have been made. The movement of this position from communities department to be under emergency. And because now it's under emergency management, we have the limitation that you are telling me. This person cannot do general community outreach. But for this council, everything's have been on, the one priority has been community engagement, not just emergency, which doesn't happen often. We need everyday community engagement. If the decision of moving it from communication department to under emergency results in us having no person for community engagement, that's wrong. Maybe that's a decision that should have been undone. Because that's the decision that I think the council was not aware of. We kind of learned that later. And then now this is turns out to be a problem. Maybe that should be fixed.
I thought that was part of the budget action, but again, I'm new to the role, so I don't want to overcommit to that. But I will look at the issue. I will look at the issue, but I do think there's only a quarter time position that's being talked about, and I don't want there to be artificial expectations for everything that can be done with a one quarter time position. And if I remember correctly, in the staff report, it's a coordinator position, not a manager position. And that is simply the job classification. If you're wanting a senior problem solver who can take care of constituent and resident concerns, that may have to be a higher level position that I would want to look at and bring back to you as a recommendation. So I think I'm I again, I'm not saying I'm not hearing the council's concern. I'm hearing it very loud and clear. The council is very concerned about the broader issue. And I'm committing to address that. That does seem to me different, though, than reducing the neighborhood watch and block leader program to meet that other need.
It's not reducing. It's that it feels like, maybe I didn't understand it, but then it feels like this person point zero five on full time position hasn't been doing even the point zero seven five of full time position. So now we are adding to them to two point two five, but then I still don't understand what exactly they should do with forty hours a week.
So to clarify, so we did have the point seventy five block leader position, coordinator position. We also had a point five neighborhood watch, part timer, unbenefited position. We have decided that we would like the neighborhood watch and block leader programs to be served by the same individual. So we're eliminating that point five neighborhood watch position.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And so now we're at the point. So I'm just explaining that in effect.
I know that we are saving, but still.
Finding the point two five elsewhere. That's what we attempted to do. We're like, okay, let's find efficiency. We have a point five. We only need point two five here. And so as in terms of a cost trade off, it is.
Yeah, okay. I know that compared with past, we are saving point two five full time employee. But now that's assuming that we are just starting up. The block leader program is new, neighborhood watch program is new. Now you are asking for one full time position to manage these two programs. So my question is, what this full time person will do twenty forty hours a week?
So we believe that they're going to be coordinating several block leader events and block parties. They're going to have their team meetings as they normally do, perhaps enhance those. We also hope that they will add additional trainings based on what the residents are hoping to learn more about. For example, we've we're currently in the process of gathering feedback because we want to do this revamp process. So we're in the in in the information gathering portion and stage. We are asking for the position at this point in time because we don't want to delay the recruitment. Because the longer we delay, we may not hit the deadline for this year's work program. And that is a priority for us. We would like to get this accomplished. So, for example, one of the things the the block leaders and the residents were interested in is we'd love to learn more about the city. And so one of those things is maybe we have kind of the department events, maybe we have other things of that nature. We don't know yet, and of course, we need to.
So all of these, you mentioned hasn't been done by the one point two five full time position in the past.
Correct. And some of it has been.
They haven't done any of those you mentioned. So they haven't done any of those that you mentioned. And now how do I know?
They have been doing their 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 meetings as well as the there's a monthly newsletter that goes out. They work on communications with their block leaders and their neighborhoods in terms of what information the city is putting out. But we do believe that it there we could improve this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Way.
Great, thank you. I I think there there might be some clarification that could happen. I'm looking at the budget and I've mentioned this previously, you've got the community outreach and neighborhood watch section. And then we have the Office of Emergency Management, which has the Citizen Corps mentioned and CERT and the CARES and Medical Reserve Corps. So I think there could be some clarification between those, the the boundaries between those two. And it could be that there's there's more in the Office of Emergency Management that get pushed over to to Community Outreach and Neighborhood Watch if you find that there's there's not enough to do. There's looks like there's plenty available. And then to make matters a little more complicated, within this section under the city manager's office, we also have the Office of Communications, which serves as the communication link between the city of Cupertino and its residents. So I think that there's and there's probably some more places within this this budget where communication shows up. For instance, under Community Development Department, perhaps there's there's something because they they need to do outreach regarding projects and send out postcards and all. And so lastly, going back to the city manager's office, it may be that the organization chart needs to be reviewed by staff and you make some recommendations that you you want to tweak some of this a little bit. Is that's that's all I see here is that and I'm not going to micromanage. This is that's this is your project, not mine, but and you'll figure it out. But I I certainly agree with the the point two five increase. It makes sense to me. That's all. Thank you. But I do have a question. I don't know. I to my recollection, Councilmember Way, if I'm correct, did the recommended action for item twenty five, but didn't get a second? Am I recalling that correctly?
No, I I moved it. I think Councilmember Way seconded it.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, so we do have the the number twenty five, the staff recommendation on the on the table. All right, thank you.
I I think that was the case. Madam City Clerk, did I move it? And then Councilmember Way seconded it.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor.
So, yeah, Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I understand Vice Mayor Chow's points that there are a lot of other things we can do. But here I would like to advocate for the the programs, the two very important programs. I actually had a Zoom talk with Laura Lee after she went, you know, retired. And I asked her, what is the neighborhood program? She was very passionate about it. She's done it for many, many years since the inception of the program. She did say that there is room for improvement. There are more things that she could have done. But she did a lot of the things that Katie said, you know, host meetings and and, you know, do a lot of things. But I wrote down a lot of her other suggestions, what we can do. So I really think this one, I do agree with manager, our city manager's point. This is different from Vice Mayor wants to do, which is also valid, that we could do more community outreach, more of neighborhood councils, things like that. But these two programs are very valuable. And if we can have someone on board who's passionate about it, this is also community outreach, community communications, and it's good for emergency outreach. So these are little combined things. Things are combined. Everything affects other things, but I do think this is a valuable program. And if we can expand it, it will really bring our city more together. So I'm very passionate about this program. That's why I had to talk with Laura after she retired and just to pick her brains up what she had done and what could be improved. And I had a lot of notes. So I I really hope that we could, you know, approve this and we can work on other things, too.
Okay, I do see Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Willie have their hands up. I'll go ahead and make some comments. We do have a substitute motion. I you you know, I understand, I think, what the sentiments are with the substitute motion. And just kind of verbalizing it in my own words, I I think there's a sentiment that there needs to be a little bit more cohesion with regard to messaging by by the city and outreach. You know, items like notice and being able to interrelate the various, you know, groups and organizations that are involved. I I think I understand what the concern is. At the same time, I think that there might be some questioning with regard to the efficacy and outreach of, you know, the particular programs being, you know, focused upon here. You you know, I I think it would be good to maintain those programs and improve them. But I also, you know, sympathize with the idea that there are things that we could be doing to improve other outreach mechanisms. And, you know, perhaps this is this this community relations coordinator title would be better substituted with something like block leader program and neighborhood watch program coordinator, I mean, for the purposes of what we're doing here. But, I mean, I I think that the issues that were outlined by the substitute motion, they're they're real, they're important. I think that they need to be addressed in a different forum. But I don't want to shortchange that by simply saying that and ignoring it. But at the same time, I also don't have some immediate thoughts as to how we most effectively go about it. I I do have a strong feeling that this is not how we most effectively go about, you know, addressing those particular issues. So, you know, I i- if you would allow, you know, some time to percolate on that idea, I I would commit to trying to put forward a proposal that would, you know, effectively address what those concerns are. But as to the neighborhood watch program and the block leader program, I I support the basic idea. So I'm planning on voting against substitute motion. And if it does end up getting back onto our consideration, the original motion support, but with a commitment to try to address meaningfully in the future the concerns raised by the substitute motion. Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Councilmember Willie.
So now that I understand structurally, it's this community managers, relations manager is under emergency manager. And so it's actually by moving that we lost a position for community management under communications department. And so my substitute motion doesn't make sense under this new structure. And so now I'm ready to second the Councilmember Willie's original amendment. I think his amendment was to approve this position, but bring ask the city manager to bring back a proposal on how to do actual community relation, community out engagement. Is that, could you, Councilmember Way, could you restate? Is that what you have in mind?
I would say somewhat close, but I like what you worded. I think with all the discussion that we had and all the points that have been brought up, I think what you've now said for the city manager to bring back so that we can wasn't quite the way I had envisioned it. I was just going to leave it to the city manager to come back with his definition of both this current position and how to address these bigger issues of the community engagement. So, but you know, if you make yours the motion and say that mine is now water under the bridge, I would second what you said.
Okay, fine. My new motion is to approve the the staff recommendation, but raise direction for the city manager to come back with recommendation for community engagement under the communication department. Since we essentially removed a position from that department.
Okay, so we. Okay, so let me clarify what you're doing procedurally. You're withdrawing your substitute motion, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so let me deal with that first. So the secondor agrees to that withdrawal, correct? Okay, and then you're substituting your original substitute motion with the following substitute motion, which is moving the staff recommendation and adding direction to the City Manager to come back to provide suggestions as to how to improve community outreach under the, the function of the community, I guess it's the PIO function, right? Basically under the Public Information Office. Is that, is that right?
And Mr. Mayor, my only request as your staff would be that it be under the CMO, because it may be a broadened function of which PIO is part of. It may be a function under PIO. I would like that flexibility. And I worry if you try to design the orange chart on the fly without staff input, you're binding us to a particular solution, which may not be the best solution for the city. And I would like more flexibility to bring back a solution for your consideration.
Okay, well, you know, I think it's up to the substitute motioner. I mean, as articulated, I would prefer what you're suggesting, Greg, under the City Manager's Office. And I'd be willing to entertain a, an amendment to, friendly amendment to my, or just amend outright my, my motion if it gets to that. But Vice Mayor, you have a substitute motion and you had recommended, you had directed it to be the staff report recommendation combined with the City Manager coming back with some input as to how to take what was originally the structure and improve it with regard to community outreach. So, did you want to take up the City Manager's suggestion to put that under the City Manager's Office? Or do you still want under what you were suggesting originally?
Under City Manager is good, yeah.
Okay, and I see a nod from Councilmember Willie, just a verbalization, if you will, Councilmember Willie that you accept. Okay. Yeah, no, I don't have any issue with with, with supporting that. So Greg, what is your thinking on timing of bringing something back to council on the direction?
I can't make a commitment to that yet tonight until I ferreted out my work plan and discuss my performance targets for my tenure as your City Manager with you.
You know, I think that's a fair answer, because it is kind of, kind of sudden, right? And you'll need to, you know, have those discussions and make that consideration. So Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Willie, Vice Mayor Chow just lowered her hand. Councilmember Willie, did you have a follow-up comment here?
I, I did. Not, you know, we've discussed so much tonight, and so I hesitate to say anything else. But, you know, I think it might be very helpful. And maybe there's, you know, I'm not quite understanding if we go back in time from people that were here that might be able to clarify. So Mayor, you were here, Kirsten was here, Katie was here. So when I was sworn in, Colleen was some type of community outreach person. Colleen, I don't know her last name. And within about six months or eight months of being sworn in, she moved to Half Moon Bay. Has that position ever been filled? Who is in that position or has it never been filled? Because it sure seems to me, without knowing much, it sure seems to me she was encompassing what we've been talking about. I mean, she was at the park events, the holiday events. She was giving out mouse pads and water bottles, explaining projects that were ongoing in the city, telling people about the city resources. Wow, she was so helpful. I have her mouse pad, you know. What happened to her? Who's doing it today? Would that be what we're talking about? And I'll leave it at that for tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Willie. And I'll take it as follow-up, you know, commentary. I believe, I believe that position was under, was reporting to the PIO at that point.
Yeah, so the position has been filled. It was Colleen Latier in the past, and now it's Kvitah Aravindan.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Katie. So we'll go to Councilmember Way.
Thank you Mayor Paul. Actually, I have a question for you as for procedures. I feel that we're combining two positions. You know, this one, we're talking about the Block Leader and the Neighborhood Watch Program. Then we added to ask the City Manager, or maybe Greg can see what, I think this should be two separate things. So I just don't feel that we're combining it and we're not giving Greg enough time to really sort this out. So I just feel that maybe it's, maybe, I'm asking Mayor Paul, maybe it's better just to approve the original motion and then make another motion to have City Manager conduct the research just and then report back to us. I just feel that, are we combining two when, with each other? How, what do you think?
You know, from my own perspective, I'm fine with, you know, approving the substitute motion because, you know, the, the follow-up with regard to the City Manager's Office is, is open-ended, right? I mean, it's a matter of trying to answer to the concerns raised with regard to community outreach and communication with constituents and between, you know, groups and between constituents. So I mean, I think, I think it would be fine. And I think that our, you know, interim City Manager will work in good faith, you know, bring back, you know, the item in as timely manner as possible. I mean, if you wanted to bifurcate, you can make that request of the substitute motion. Although I do note that if you bifurcate it, it basically becomes the original motion and something else, right? So I, I think that, I think that the other option would be just to vote against it, right? But of course, you would want to be able to indicate that you support the original staff recommendation. So I understand the situation that you're in. So let me ask the movement of the substitute motion. Vice Mayor Chow, would you be willing to break this into two parts so that we could vote separately on each component of the substitute motion?
I don't think we're mixing. I think we do this quite often, that we approve staff recommendation and we add a direction to staff to do some follow-up, right? Don't we do this often?
Yeah. Well, let me just do this. Let me just, let me, let me let you know that, I mean, just for the sake of being able to construct a clear record based upon the now stated, you know, concern from another council member, I would go ahead and vote against the substitute motion. But when it came back to my motion originally, I'd vote for that. Assuming that passes, I'll bring forward another motion to add your component. And, you know, I would vote in favor of that. But I don't know exactly, you know, how the majority would, would work out. I would imagine it would be a majority on each side at least. So that's where I stand right now. Does that change your mind at all with regard to whether you'd like to break up your substitute motion? I don't know if you're counting votes, but I think you might not have enough to pass the substitute motion at this point.
Okay, so it's okay to split it, but I don't see the point.
Well, the point is to see if you want to, you know, get something passed, right? Okay, so let's go ahead and do that. Councilmember Willie, are you okay with breaking the substitute motion into two parts?
True. Could we clearly phrase the two separate?
Okay, so the substitute motion is now in two parts. There's a first motion, which is the staff recommendation. The second motion is the bringing back by the City Manager of recommendations based upon your stated concerns and Vice Mayor Chow's stated concerns with regard to community outreach.
But isn't the first part exactly what your motion was then?
Yes, yes it is.
So shouldn't we be doing your first motion and then the second half of Vice Mayor Chow's motion?
I would be happy to do it that way as well, if you would like to withdraw the original, the substitute motion and then just let you and Vice Mayor Chow bring forward another motion.
Yeah, I think that makes more sense that there is a second motion that is only about the direction to staff.
I'm hoping we're doing it, I think it is cleaner procedurally to do it that way. So let me just clarify this. Vice Mayor Chow, you're withdrawing your substitute motion. And Councilmember Willie, you withdraw the second of the substitute motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no other hands raised from council, I will go ahead and ask the City Manager to conduct a roll call vote of my original.
Greg has his hand up.
Oh, I just forgot to drop it and I believe the clerk will call the vote, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thanks very much. On my original motion for the staff recommendation.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, at this time, Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to put your motion on the table?
Yeah, I'd like to move for, to give the staff direction to consider on potential position or need a way to, to have handle community engagement. Since a position was moved to the emergency management now. So this, this person should consider community engagements through different community organizations. And many, and may manage different outreach under the, whenever the city does a project like Westport and Cell Phone, Small Cell, different project and so that we can accumulate outreach information within the city.
Okay, well, okay, somebody, somebody work with me here to try to get this motion in, in a format that we're, that we can actually.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Might it be, the motion would be, this is what the Vice Mayor and the councilman want, to provide direction to the City Manager to return with the recommendation for a broadened community engagement and outreach program for the city.
Is that acceptable?
And that's your, that's your direction to me to come back.
Okay, is that acceptable, Vice Mayor Chow? I'll read it again. Your motion would be, I move to give staff direction to the City Manager to return with a recommendation for broadened community engagement and outreach for the city. Is that acceptable? Because what you stated originally, I don't think we should write it down in the motion. I mean, it was, you know, just forgive me for being blunt, but it just.
What broaden means?
Right.
It's too vague, what does broaden means? And we were just like, we were just ask the Citizen Corp to call their friends. Is that broadening outreach?
Let me, let me put it this way. If you're not putting forward a motion that, that can be replicated and read with cohesion, I'm not going to vote for it. So if you would like to take, you know, a few minutes to write down a motion, I would be happy to take a five-minute break. It's about five minutes till eleven. We can reconvene at eleven o'clock. If you would like to take that time to write something down that would be to your satisfaction, share it with us on the screen. What you recited earlier, I will not vote for that. Because it, to me, I don't, it didn't sound cohesive, so.
And Mr. Mayor, I think I've heard the direction from the council in terms of what you're looking at. And my job is to bring back to you what you're asking for. And if I come back and say, I recommend we do one more mailing, I expect you to shoot that down in a very embarrassing process because I clearly didn't hear what you were asking for. So I'm asking you to trust that I've heard your discussion and that you want a significantly enhanced community engagement and outreach program for this city. And I've seen that in other jurisdictions, and I'm asking for your indulgence to work on that and to bring that back as a recommendation for you to determine if I hit the mark with what you're seeking or do you want to tweak it and change it at that time?
Sure, but Vice Mayor Chow has indicated that she's, you know, not accepting of the language that you proposed. So I'm just wondering what the language.
Sounds good. I think that I like the new language. And I think Greg made it a little more clear, yeah.
Very good. Very good, Councilmember Willie, thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. I personally don't think that we need to have a motion in order to do this. To me, it is the City Manager directing staff to do their jobs. So in, in our budget, we have the Office of Emergency Management. There was an increase of staffing from zero point nine five to one point nine five in the current budget we just approved. Community Outreach and Neighborhood Watch, current staffing zero point seven five, we're moving it to one. And then under Office of Communications, we have a total staffing amount of three. And the service objectives, as I said before, was to serve as the communications link between the City of Cupertino and residents. And I think that we, we have informed the City Manager how important this issue is and that, you know, I pressed him to, to look into these different communication venues that we have in the city and make sure that they're working. If you, if you feel that you need to direct through motion, I'm dismayed. I trust Greg and I think that, that we're in good hands. But if you feel that you need to do that, which apparently you do, then, then go ahead. But I'm, I'm not going to vote for it because I, I believe that Greg understands what we're asking.
So you mean you don't want the staff to come back with a plan for more extensive outreach, which we haven't had?
Hands please, Vice Mayor Chow.
Sorry.
For the Mayor, please.
Vice, Councilmember Moore, did you want to respond to Vice Mayor Chow's comment?
I trust our new City Manager. He understands what our concerns are. I think he's heard it loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you both. I will vote for the motion. And so I, but, but the points are well taken. I actually completely agree with everything that people are saying. I think we're pulling in the same direction. I will notice, I will, I will note that this isn't empowering any additional staffing. And so I also think that it injects some transparency into our process. Because of course, you know, we do have a set of expectations and performance metrics. But to put this in front of our city again, you know, puts it at the forefront. And it, you know, puts a bookmark to articulate these types of expectations and standards in the future.
Can I clarify? I don't understand this. So, so now will this, will Greg bring back a plan for community outreach? What I mean is, for example, coffee talk. We didn't have a person who really managed that. City Manager took over. I started, he took, she took over and then now she left. There is no one doing that. The park walk and like the corporate, I want to organize roundtable with business. There is no, I did the flyer, I did everything, but no one is there to help me outreach. So no one know about the event. But I don't know who in the city staff can do that because they are all saying this is not their job. So we don't have a person right now. And now we are giving direction for Greg to help us solve this problem. There is a vacancy, vacant thing that's important to us. And so we want to trust Greg, but shouldn't. And so we want to trust Greg, but shouldn't trusting means, yet I won't direct Greg on how exactly to implement it, but I want to see something to come back. That's not, not trusting. That's, that's my responsibility to solve a problem. So I think I trust Greg to solve it, but I want to see how he solved it, right? Is that not reasonable?
Thank you Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore?
With regards to economic development, the city has a request for that position to be filled. And I think that we should be looking at a study session, not having a single council member trying to do the work of the economic development manager on their own.
No, I'm not doing, I'm just doing a roundtable.
Don't interrupt. Yeah, so we should have an economic development program in place and we work on this as a group rather than having individuals trying to have this done separately. Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to? Honestly, we're starting to go into circles here and so I'm going to go ahead and call.
Yeah, so.
What's your comments?
Are we, are we, so, okay, I will still propose this motion that I would like to see city manager to bring back a plan of, like he said, a more extensive community outreach program. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries with more voting no.
Okay, we're on to item number 26, but let's go ahead and take a five minute break. And so we'll start up again at 11:08. All right, we're on item number 26. This is receiving an internal audit enterprise risk assessment and consider approving the internal audit plan for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Greg, would you like to introduce the presenter for our presentation on this item?
Yes, I will be very quick. I believe we have three presenters. Christina, our administrative services director, and Zach Korach, our finance manager. And it's great to see Mark Staranka, our internal auditor who is outsourced, who had the good fortune of meeting, I think it was nine months ago, so.
Okay, great. Thank you Greg. And given the late time and my commitment to wrap up our meetings by midnight, I'm going to ask and I'm going to hold fast to this that our presenters be done within 10 minutes on what they're presenting in total. Please respect that and I will cut it off after 10 minutes. Thank you.
Very good. So good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Zach Korach, Finance Manager. With that in mind, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and turn it over directly to Mark Staranka from Moss Adams to discuss the enterprise risk assessment report and the recommended items for the internal audit plan for the upcoming or the current fiscal year.
Great, thank you Zach. I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully you can see that. I believe you can. So Mr. Mayor and other members of the city council, Mark Staranka from Moss Adams, it's a pleasure to be here. I will be very concise, so don't worry. Going to give you an update on activities relatives to your internal audit program of which they have encompassed two, an enterprise risk assessment and development of an internal audit plan. I'll address both of those elements tonight. I'll focus mostly on the internal audit plan. This is a slide that you'll get used to seeing. Each time that I speak to you, I'll address this just to sort of orient us in that from an internal audit perspective, each year we'll bring to you an internal audit plan. The goal of that plan will be to introduce projects that will help the city to reduce risks, to strengthen your controls and compliance and enhance performance. Each year we'll touch some functions within the organization, but over a multi-year period, the goal is to touch most, if not all, of the functions. But we kind of have this lens of thinking of reducing risks, strengthening controls and compliance, and enhancing performance. So risk assessments are typically what fuel or inform internal audit programs. I'm going to talk real briefly about how we conducted the enterprise risk assessment. I'm going to focus on just a couple of elements, fact finding, so a whole bunch of interviews, council members, audit committee members, city manager's office and department leadership, reviewing a whole host of documents that were requested for the city, and then surveying management to get their perspective and their sort of evaluation of risks. We take that information and then we assess the risk environment and develop a report. Our report, if you've had a chance to see others, is quite robust. It's robust for a couple of reasons. One is to be able to inform an internal audit program of multiple years. And second is, we have the opportunity to come in and assess the organization. So really, we're trying to give you information that's useful, both at the council level, audit committee level, city management level, not only just for the internal audit program, but there's all sorts of information in that report that's helpful to you to potentially inform other decisions or actions you may take. So how do we assess risks? So each area or each function that we evaluate across the organization, and we'll see those on the next slide, have an overall risk rating or overall risk level. In the marketplace, it's typically informed by two elements, the likelihood of a negative event and the impact of a negative event. And those are very important and meaningful, but they're a little bit limiting. And so in ours, evaluation of risk, we also add preparedness. How prepared is the city to deal with a negative event? In trajectory, which is, what is the city doing relative to risk? Are we doing relatively little and therefore risks are likely on the increase? Or are we working on things at the time that we're assessing and those things are likely to reduce risk? So trying to give credit for the context in which we're evaluating risks. And then based on what we learn in our write-up of each function and what we've learned is risk mitigation actions. And those are the actions that tend to translate directly into internal audit plans, but also identify other activities that the city may take on its own outside of internal audit. And then if you take those risk mitigating actions, what impacts they have on risk, i.e. what your residual risk would be. So it helps give you much more robust sort of insight into your risk environment in the city. So here's just the very high level summary of the risk assessment. And we see all the different categories that we assess for us. We see our risk assessment, which is the middle column, and then we see the results of the management survey in terms of risk. And all we're doing here is a couple of things. One is, our reports focused on our risk assessment, that middle column. We like to compare to management to see if there are any disconnects. Our risk ratings are generally a little bit higher than management's. That's kind of common. And that doesn't mean ours is better. It's just kind of our view and we do it sort of for a living. So we'll probably have a little bit more scrutiny to it. But you might notice here, two areas that pop out just in terms of disconnects. Procurement and contracting where we say high and management said low to moderate. Information technology, we say moderate to high, management said low to moderate. That's not, that's not a reason for concern. That doesn't mean we're right, management's wrong or anything like that. It's an opportunity for education and I would submit that in procurement and contracting, it's quite decentralized, which is very common in cities. And so the component parts probably think that their elements are relatively low risk. But looking at as a whole, which we do, we have a little bit different perspective. Similarly, our information technology, it has multiple components. One area that's, I would say, of high risk within information technology, cybersecurity, that's kind of, would be no surprise. And so that's probably an area that people in general aren't thinking specifically about that. But then just to give you summary comments, only one area of high risk. Several areas each of moderate to high, moderate to low to moderate risk. This is a very sort of middle of the road assessment, not real high risk, not real low risk. And then this helped to inform the internal audit plan. What we always do when we're developing internal audit plans is bring multiple projects sort of to the table so that we're not jumping right to what we're recommending. Because we like management to consider different things. We like the audit committee to consider different areas of focus. So we identified these, I think it turns out to be 11 projects, just for considering for FY 2122. Discussed these with management and came up with a recommended set of projects, which was what was presented to the audit committee. Those are four projects for FY 2122. First one addresses the one high-risk area as a procurement operational review. So kind of consider it a pretty thorough checkup on procurement, looking to help it operate more efficiently, more effectively, more consistently, more safely across the city. Policy inventory and plan, that was one of the common themes as it often is in risk assessments, where there are elements of policies and procedures that either don't exist or out of date. Doing a full inventory and developing a prioritized plan will set a roadmap for the city to start to fortify policies and procedures. Capital program effectiveness study, think of much of your dollars are in your capital program and the throughput of that program, how well are we working together? Have processes that are efficient and effective for achieving our capital programs, getting accomplished each year what we as a council hope to get accomplished and how are we doing that in terms of contract management reporting? And then the fourth area, fraud, waste and abuse, this is the best practice. This is about educating your employee base, or I should say, from the council down, your entire organization, about what fraud, waste and abuse is. The goal here is to prevent it. It's often thought a fraud, waste and abuse program is to detect it. It does have elements of being able to detect, but education part in doing this the right way, the goal is to prevent it. And then finally, last slide, just showing you that, so these projects were selected from the potential projects, A to address high areas of value for the city and B to fit within your budget for internal audit, for the internal audit program. This shows how those projects fit into your budget availability for these activities and likely the sequencing of when they would happen. So that's going to conclude. Hopefully I'm under 10 minutes. You didn't have to cut me off, so I'll take that as a yes. And I'll have to answer your questions.
Great, thanks very much.
You bet.
Questions from council with regard to the presentation? I see that.
And I'll stop sharing so we can see each other.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Chow?
Oh, hi. The fraud hotline program, so the cost of $25,000 is to set it up. What's the annual operation cost? And then also, if we approve today, does that mean we approve the hotline program? Or it will come back for another budget from going cost?
Yeah, so great questions. I'll, I think, address two questions at least in there. So one is, the ongoing cost of a hotline is very minimal, usually $1,000 to $2,000. That's for an outsourced vendor, not Moss Adams, who actually has a hotline platform and administers that so that there's a mechanism for those reports to be received and then disseminated. Usually those reports go to the internal auditor, but we're not receiving them directly. So there's a nominal cost for the ongoing operation of it now, but that's not the only cost. Then there's the cost, I'll say, associated with reviewing those reports as they come in. And although very infrequent, there are going to, here and there are going to be reports that need to be delved into. And so there will be some costs associated when there's something that needs to be investigated or researched. But you would have to do that anyway, whether it came in through a hotline report or some other mechanism. And so that's.
Who would do the investigation? That would be city manager.
So the way that that typically works is you can think of hotline, reports through a hotline usually of three types. First type is, has nothing to do with the city, so there's nothing to do. You say, thanks, no thanks. Something to do with the city that can be designated, allocated, distributed to someone within the city. The most common is HR because you'll typically get personnel-related reports there. And so that information will be directed towards HR or someone else within the city, to your point. But yes, someone from the city. And then if it's a report that seems like it might actually have the potential to be fraud, waste or abuse, usually what happens is there's some collaboration with someone from the city. Often it's something financial related, so you're working with your finance director, you're looking into it a little bit more. Most often, it doesn't turn out to be something that's truly potentially fraud, waste or abuse. If and that's the less likely chance that it is, then there's multiple ways you can move forward. Cities usually have on-contract outside investigators who will look into something. Sometimes that's your internal auditor looking at it. There are multiple ways to do it depending on the nature of it.
Okay, so I actually looked up a report that they say San Francisco does this, but only through their 311 line, which we already have. And so, or a web form. So is there a need to have a phone line where someone picks up and then you can't really record anything accurately through a phone line? Oh, I guess you can record it. So I'm just wondering, do you need to have a phone line, someone answering? Or maybe 311 app or a web form will be enough to capture?
So I'm not sure what information you reviewed from San Francisco, but a 311 line is really a service line and it's, I have a need, I have someone in the city, I have a need, I want to report that.
They use that as a whistleblower. I'm looking at actually a report by Sacramento that assessed this kind of hotline program of different cities. San Diego, Oakland and San Francisco, that's they surveyed because they are trying to decide if they want to do it in Sacramento.
Okay.
So San Francisco has used a 311 program.
Okay, thank you Vice Mayor Chow. Let me go on to Councilmember Willie at this point.
Yeah, thank you Mark.
Good evening.
10 minutes, you're awesome.
Thanks.
I like visuals, so what might help, your slide number eight, eight slash nine. And so, I, you know, I'm not a finance person, you know, I'm a techie. So I'm a fish out of water, but my question would be, you know, along the lines, which may not be appropriate to this context. Your thing didn't come up on the screen, so we're not looking at your.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll pull it back up. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, here you go. Care with me?
Then you can help point me to the number eight, yeah.
Oops, sorry, I went too far there.
Oh, yeah, great.
This one with here?
Yeah, so my question, you know, we had an embezzlement problem and, you know, to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars and, you know, an employee. And so, internal audit projects, so fraud, waste, abuse or policy, you know, do your functions help us to prevent, you know, an embezzlement type of situation? That's the question.
Gotcha. So I'll give you a yes and no. So, so yes, in the types of projects that any internal auditor should be doing, and certainly the type that we're proposing, are going to address functions within the city and how those functions operate that will help strengthen, in one case, controls, could be segregation of duties, et cetera, et cetera, so that you will be better positioned over time to prevent something like that from happening. over time to prevent something like that from happening. On the no side is, you can't prevent everything and you can't be everywhere all the time. So is, does that risk always exist? Yes, and, and actually, and I'm not trying to overstate it, but that's one of the reasons you have a fraud, waste and abuse program, it's not just to have a hotline, it's to build awareness within the organization of what fraud, waste and abuse is doing, so that if the whatever, eight of us, nine of us on screen right now, we're all doing, you know, have a role within the city and we're working together, you know, we kind of have a little, it's not, I'm looking over your shoulder, but we sort of have some awareness that if we see something that doesn't seem quite right, maybe we're a little more attuned to it than if we don't have exposure. So consider it training, building awareness, that's, that's just one element, just like all these other projects are just one element, so I'm not trying to make that more important, but the goal is to strengthen your organization in the way that helps you prevent that. I would say for me, internal audit, the overriding goal is to help the city do what it does better, to do every element of the city to try to help you do those things better, better achieve your goals, better meet the needs of the community, internal controls and prevention of embezzlement and fraud is one element of that, obviously an important one, especially having the experiences that you've had.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to take this to our attendees, Councilmember Wei, you...
That's okay, let's go to attendees first.
Okay, Peggy Griffin from the public, and anyone else who would like to speak on this, you'll need to raise your hand before Peggy is done speaking. Welcome Peggy.
I obtained this information via a public records request, asking for information regarding all invoices from HDL for economic development. And what you see here on the first line is an invoice date of December 31st, 2019, but the city didn't receive it till August. On the second line, the city received, the invoice date is March 2020, but the city received it in June. This doesn't make sense. Fourth line down, the invoice date is July 31st, 2020, it was received about a month later, but then it wasn't paid for another, what, 10 months, nine months? It doesn't make sense. Further down, the invoice date, second from the bottom, December 8th, 2020, it was received, but it was paid six months later, five months later. And the second, the last line, January 2021, wasn't paid until May of 2021. These dates don't make sense, as a contractor, when I submitted invoice, I had a due date and then it was supposed to be paid, and if I submitted three invoice, if I had three invoices outstanding, on the third one, I walked out with my work. And so companies get a bad reputation if they don't get paid, if they don't pay their invoices. Next slide, please. So a little bit further, yeah, that's it. So what I'm requesting in this procurement and contracting was found to be high-risk, I'm hoping that these items will be covered under the procurement operational review. Third-party contractor invoice submittal, approval and payment procedures, clarified and tightened. Put procedures in place to prevent the submittal and approval of payments that exceed contracted amounts. Require accounts payable reports submitted to the city council within a month. These are things that will help and improve and tighten the process, thank you.
Thank you Peggy. I don't see any other hands raised from members of the public, so I'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Moore, you have a hand raised, and so you'll have first crack at putting forward a motion. Would you like to do that?
Sure, I recommend that we receive the internal audit enterprise risk assessment and approve the internal audit plan for fiscal year 2021 to 2022, which is the, the motion is to approve the recommended action in the staff report.
Is there a second for this motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Willie seconds. All right, Councilmember Moore, your hand is still raised, would you like to comment on the motion?
Yes, okay, so we received the first enterprise risk assessment, we made some modifications to it, there were some concerns about the governance part with long meetings, putting that in the high-risk area, and it was, it was, right, and it was, they did go to four, so we're doing pretty well. So one of the parts that I really appreciated about this was the identification of the procurement operational review issue, and you brought up the 2018 purchasing policy revision had been started and yet not completed, and that has been, which Peggy Griffin is bringing up some of the issues surrounding that, that's been an ongoing issue that, which we need some help with, and understanding what the manager's contract dollar authority is for us compared to other cities, and for when it's a recurring year contract, if it's a three-year contract, what's the, what's the contract amount, and so things of, things of that nature, and having our municipal code in alignment with what our procurement policy is and alignment with what state law is. So one of the things that we saw that happened was that in our budget, we had a contract amount, a contract services amount, the city manager entered into a contract which was over that amount, then the service provider who had that contract charged more than the contract, contract amount which we had engaged in, and then this happened twice. So we, the first time it happened, it didn't appear to have been flagged, the second time it did, and staff can correct about the first, the first time it happened, but there's some question about what we're budgeting for contract services amount, what, how does that hold? If the city manager wants to contract for an amount larger than that, do they need to come to city council for approval, and you know, just what are those kinds of policies? Then I also really appreciated that you caught the, the potential for there being issues with the credit cards. So when I looked into the credit card payments, I was seeing amounts between $35,000 and $95,000 per month, between 40 and 45 employees generating those fees, and my question is, has been, how are those amounts being allocated to the different parts of the budget? And do we have, do we have a good credit card policy? I did look at San Francisco, they've got a great comptroller manual, it's about 900 pages, they get into the issue that Peggy mentioned, which is about paying the bills every, every 30 days. They have a great section on the credit cards, and that's the kind of thing I'm hoping for, that we can point the residents to and say, you know, this, these are our policies, they're right here, it's super transparent, and that'll help us. And you're talking about the policy inventory and plan, that's just, you know, right in alignment with what I'd like to see. With fraud, waste and abuse, you know, I, if, if the, having the hotline is the huge deal, then find another way, find another way for someone to be able to securely be able to communicate their concerns and have them get addressed, that if there's a less expensive way to do it, then you know, please, please provide that suggestion. And you know, lastly, I have some concern with our organizational chart and the, and the position of our HR director with regards to finance, and is that a risk area where I wouldn't want an employee to feel uncomfortable about bringing up a, an issue, given the way the organization, the organizational chart is structured at this time. So I'm really excited about the, the report, I read it cover to cover, and anyway, I really liked it, thanks.
Thanks, and I know you read it.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from council? You know, with regard to why we started this, yes, it was the embezzlement, in fact, it was something that, I see Councilmember Wei and Vice Mayor Chow have their hands up, but I'll make my comments here. It was the embezzlement, and I wonder whether the suggestions that are being made right now would have remedied the problem that we were identifying and that motivated this exercise here. So if we have a hotline, is the embezzler going to be reporting on herself? If I put myself, you know, back between 2000 and 2014, before any of us on council, were on council? And you know, I kind of wonder as well, you know, if that was happening and an audit had been done in 2007, and they looked at that current council, whether, you know, some internal assessments of a moderate risk would be elevated to a high risk based upon the duration of a meeting. So I actually looked at, look at this with a much more skeptical eye, and I wonder, okay, if the impetus was to try to prevent embezzlement from happening again, what suggestions are being made to help safeguard? Because I know what we've done internally, we've put in some controls with regard to making sure that we check these expenditures, we're making sure that the software is in place to make sure that these types of accounts aren't, you know, inputted by hand from, you know, a developer account, for instance. And what the member of the public was pointing out was very real-time, very on-the-ground inconsistencies in the records, inconsistencies with regard to, well, why, you know, why, why does one person receive a particular invoice and it gets paid, you know, in a certain amount of time in one instance and a much longer amount of time in another? So I, I mean, those are, those are real on-the-ground kind of improvements. I mean, I, I hope that this program helps to improve it over time. I wonder whether it might not be a little bit more efficacious to take this report and internalize it and ask our city manager to evaluate it, because just as all politics is local, I think what we can, you know, really look at insofar as the details go are very localized as well. And so, you know, I just, I watched the first Audit Committee meeting where this was presented, and I thought, you know, are we being Googled with articles being, you know, kind of put in the media reflecting, you know, in this initial draft? And so I just kind of wondered, I also wondered with regard to the governance structure, where, well, one of the primary issues is the length of the meetings, and I wonder why at this point in July, no credence is being made to the fact that seven months ago, I made a very concerted effort to make sure that we're done by midnight. So, you know, I, I do have some ongoing questions with regard to what our next steps should be. I'm fully supportive of the notion of an internal audit, that's something that I actually put forward three years ago, I'm the one who pushed for this, but I'd like to make sure that we are putting our money and resources in solving the problems, and that we're very clear-eyed with regard to what those problems are, and that we're working internally with the people on the ground that know our systems. But also, you know, I think an external auditor, you know, can be really useful with regard to having a fresh set of eyes and professional, you know, training and taking that perspective, you know, assuming that the communication is there, you know, kind of putting the knowledge of our systems in and adding value to that. I mean, for me, it's kind of, you know, I, I wouldn't mind putting, you know, the brakes on this and having us conduct an internal evaluation. Does this make sense for fraud, waste and abuse to go about it this way, you know, and the other categories as well? Yeah, so one thing, you know, and maybe this is a nit, but under risk assessment results, everything seems to be alphabetized except governance under B, E does come before G after all. So, you know, I, I'd like to be able to get a, get a sense of our internal staffing and whether they would, well, whether they would go about it in a, in a particular direction vis-à-vis the recommendations. Councilmember Wei, followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you Mayor Chow, Mayor Paul, so I read this also in detail and I highlighted some of the points, but first I want to say I actually pretty impressed with our staff, they kind of self-recognized a lot of the, the things that needs to be done, you know, procedures, ordinances not, not being said, and so expectations not being said. So I think our staff is probably is on board with this, you know, next steps. And then also, it looks like a lot of the issues are coming from, we don't have policies and documents or follow-ups or management oversight. So I really like this document that, that exposes a lot of what our city can do and will do, and so I actually, Mayor Paul just, just asked the same question, from here, what are the next steps? Okay, so I think it's for the city council and our interim city manager, and also our incoming city manager and our staff to work together, and to really, how do we build trust if we have good procedures, we have good oversight, and then we can build trust with, with the council, with the staff and with our residents? So I'm very excited this is now that we are doing this together, and I, I have a feeling that our staff is on board, our council's on board, and our interim city manager is on board, and hopefully our new manager, city manager will be on board too. So that's my brief comment, but I would like to know what are the next steps?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Wei. Let me check in with our city manager, who does have his hand raised. Uh, great. Any other...
You know, I, I raised my hand just so after all the council comments were done, I could respond to at least your comments. Mr. Mayor, but now I'll respond to Councilmember Wei's. I need to tell you, as the interim city manager, I was ecstatic when I learned that this process is underway, and the entire enterprise risk assessment, and the development of the work plan, and the work that Mark and your finance staff did with the Audit Committee, all occurred before I even knew I was coming here. But I believe so strongly in the importance of the internal audit function that I actually don't feel it matters if myself or our staff agrees or disagrees with the work plan of the internal audit function, because it's the independence of that internal audit function that matters most. And we will cooperate and collaborate and work in trust for the betterment of the city because that's the outcome. I also must say, I'm ecstatic having helped another city choose an internal audit function, you have one of the best firms that you've engaged to do this work, and so I have high confidence in, in the firm you've engaged to do this work, and Mark in particular. So I trust the process. When I first became a city manager, I recommended two positions in my first budget to the council, one was an internal audit position, and one was an internal affairs position in the police department, because those were the two critical needs I felt the city needed to have, to have in a culture of accountability and transparency. Going to the key question I've heard a couple people raised is, would this work plan have prevented the embezzlement a decade ago? Who knows? You know, that's, you can't predict the past, but I do have such a profound belief that an intense independent audit program creates a culture of accountability and transparency, that you're doing everything you can to minimize those risks. So I will never offer you my opinion unless the council directs me so, on whether I think this audit should be above this one or that one, that's your internal auditor with the council to make that judgment. We have other opportunities to weigh in and to provide staff's perspective on issues. So I just want to share that, and also to my staff. So I just want to share that, and also to my staff, that I fully support this process, and the staff organization will fully support this process. Will it entail a lot more work? You bet. Every department is going to be involved in having to respond to the purchasing audit issue because it's decentralized, every department. That means other work isn't getting done because we're giving Mark and his team the information they need. We're providing the work plan to cure deficiencies in it. So it does entail more work, and I think it's a critical investment for the future of the city. And then when you have audits that deal with particular departments, their workload goes up even more. But it's all worth the investment. Sorry if I got on my soapbox. I feel strongly about this.
Okay.
And I just wanted to let you know.
No, no, no worries. And, and, and no worries about the substance. I'm just looking at the time at this point. So, thank you, Greg.
Got it.
Appreciate your thoughts there, Vice Mayor Chow.
Oh, okay, so three questions. First is, on, yeah, first, thank you. I, I think I, I like the recommendation in the internal audit plan. Looking forward to hear the result. And the, still, so I like that the fact that there will be education component with the fraud, waste, and abuse program, because that's really what will help us improve and prevent things from happening. But then I suppose this has to happen maybe annually as new people coming in? So then I would like to get the clarity. Okay, $25,000 to plan the program. Do we, how much is it will be the annual cost? Annual cost for hotline is $5,000? Annual cost for training? Or how much would that be? I would like clarity on that. And then the second question that I asked earlier, so today, we approve this plan. Does that mean we approve the program? Or we will see the program later in a more, from the way? Like, how is the hotline? How do we ensure anonymity? And then how who will be doing the cas- case management? Would we come, that come back later? I, it wasn't answered earlier, so.
So, sorry if I didn't answer. So I can answer both those questions. So the first is relative to training. What we typically do is a combination of some in-person and some web-based training. The in-person is typically for council and senior management. And the web-based is something that all employees can use. And we, we record those and place them. We have what's called the Mossam's YouTube channel. And so then that can be used in, in perpetuity, and there's no additional cost to that. So you would have a mechanism to do ongoing training, whatever frequency, but certainly in future years to draw from that material. You could also draw from the material that we use for the in-person training, but you'll certainly have that, and that's typically used that way. The, what you would be approving in terms of this particular line, project for fraud, waste, and abuse would be for defining the program and providing the training associated with that. It would come back to you in terms of that program to, as our other projects would. This one's not technically going to be an audit. It would go to the audit committee and back to the council. And within that program would be the hotline. And, and then we would provide the city information that they could obtain quotes for that hotline. Again, it's fairly nominal cost, but the answer to your question, that would come back to you. So this is just the development of it, not the commitment to do it.
Great. And then the third question is Peggy's question. She raised some question on whether the procurement portion could include those items? Would the, would that be included?
Yeah, so, so what we'll do in terms of a procurement review, kind of think of it as two elements to it. One is sort of performance-related. So how are all the functions operating? How well are they operating? And some of it will be more on sort of the control side. So we'll do sort of a little mini risk assessment. We'll identify areas that we think we should do sampling and testing. And the examples that you gave that were provided were example of things that you would sample and test for. So yes, we will do some of that. It won't be an exhaustive thing, or else, I mean, we want to make the project economical for you. But we'll, we will address elements such as that for sure within the project.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, great. We have a motion on the table. We have a second. I don't see any further hands raised at this point. And so I'll ask our city clerk to conduct the roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good rest of the evening. We've got nine minutes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are now on item number 27, and item number 27 is relating to drought. I don't want to shortchange it. We only have, as our, as our auditor, internal pointed out, less than 10 minutes here. Let me refer this to our city manager at this point. We had talked, and you had made a really excellent suggestion that I bring forward a drought proclamation to the, or rather, drought-related proclamation to the beginning of our August meeting. I know that the staff report alone is going to take a certain amount of time here. That will exceed what we're looking at. And so what are the thoughts about moving this to our August meeting at this time? Is that something that would work? Because I, I do want to make sure that we're respectful of, you know, timing considerations.
Thank you, and I'll try to keep my response short. First, the idea for you to prepare a proclamation came from your city staff. I don't want to claim ownership of that. I just want to share that it wasn't my idea, but I think it's a great one to take what the city does to conserve water during a drought to the broader public. I do think there is an immediacy to this issue where we want to make sure the council is aware of city operational changes that will be necessary as we respond as an organization to the drought. You've read most of that in the staff report. I'm asked, might ask Roger to just hit three key points that he thinks the council should be aware of, just to make sure we're in alignment on that, and then we could bring follow-up back in a month.
Well, Roger? But I do note, I, I'm going to hold to the midnight deadline, but, but we do have a special meeting that we'll be noticing tomorrow for Thursday. That, that is slated to begin at 6:15. So what we could do is bring that in before we have closed session. I think if we, we've allocated about half an hour for this, and, you know, I don't see us going on. And so let me bring it to the pleasure of the council. You know, I, I, I have committed to you midnight. So what would be the preference here? Would we want to go to 12:30, or would we like to move this to Thursday? I, I'll tell you my preference. I, I'd rather just, you know, move it to Thursday so that we're not going too far into the night here. But, you know, I'll go by majority will here. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say that, you, you know, I don't, drought and water conservation is very important now. And I think we really should be alert to what needs to be done and how we can get the word out in the community. Doing it tonight at this time, you know, my brain isn't going to retain, you know, much of the material. So I would say that coming at it fresh on Thursday and being able to take it as a serious topic that it is would be the most effective.
Okay.
I'm open.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Did, did anyone else want to weigh in on this? I don't see any other hands raised from council. I'm going to go ahead and table this until our special meeting on Thursday. If that's the, if, if that's the procedurally appropriate. And for that, I'll refer to Chris, our city attorney. Do you believe I need to make a motion or ask for a motion to table this until our special meeting on Thursday?
Yeah, I think, I think a motion to, to table would be, be appropriate.
Okay, so I'll make that motion. I, I'll motion to table item number 27. You know, and, and for that matter, the council and staff comments for future agenda items to our special meeting on Thursday, which we'll notice tomorrow. You have a second, Councilmember Way?
Yeah, I'll second it. But my question is, do we do it before or after our close session?
Oh, we'll do it before the close session. But, you know, right at the beginning there.
That's good. So the staff doesn't have to stay too long. Yes, I'll second that. Thank you, Mayor Paul.
Okay, great. Okay, so we have a motion to second. I don't see any further hands raised. I don't see any attendees raising their hands either. And so, Madam City Clerk, if you could please conduct that roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone. We will see you on Thursday, that's in two days, on the 22nd of July to finish up the item on this agenda. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is on August 17th. We've canceled the first meeting in August as part of our summer schedule. I thank you very much for your engagement over the course of this evening. And, you know, I congratulate our interim city manager, as well as our new city attorney for completing their first regular meeting of the council with many more, I'm sure, excellent and wonderful things to come for the community. With that, I will bid you all a good night and adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned.
But welcome, Chris and Greg.
Okay.